Okay, the board has reconvened from closed session and the next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 26th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will enter Kane, a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of January 26th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any public comment this evening? And then we do have one public comment that is attached to Board Docs. Moving on to the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Consent agenda, sorry, just has personnel recommendations on it today. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Foyle?
Yes.
Ms. Huber?
Yes.
Ms. Donio?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Roemer?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Discussion items. First item up for discussion is an update on summer school.
And I have, the first part of the presentation is actually kind of what we've been doing the last few meetings is update on the current school year, but then I do have information about summer programming towards the end of the presentation. And again, we've now moved to Phase Four, Tier One mitigation. So we're limited to groups of 50, but you still have to socially distance six feet, still have to wear masks. So all those mitigations, we're still self-certifying. And again, we always say that Phase Five is when we'll quote unquote, return to normal. And we're waiting on distribution of vaccine and then also no new cases. Again, our guiding principles is always, it's always about the safety of our students and staff at the same time balancing that with the academic needs and the social emotional needs of our students and staff. COVID data since our last board meeting, our last board meeting was on the 26th. And so you can see in terms of certified staff, how many have tested positive, have had to quarantine or cannot self-certify and what we are total for the year, and then also our non-certified staff as well, where we're at with that. We now do have some attendance data for students because we've been in session since January 19th. And so you can see the numbers of students that have not been able to self-certify. And typically it's because, again, they have some type of a symptom related to COVID, but we don't know if they are positive for COVID. And then you can see we had one positive test, is actually a student who is remote that tested positive and that's been, that's since the 19th. The local positivity rates continue to look good for our area with Westmont is under 3% now and our average for our community is 3.82%. So that's good to see. This is, this has been updated on Monday is when the Page County Health Department releases the new updated school metrics. You can see again, it's all trending in a very positive light. Our cases per 100,000 are under 200 now, which is good to see. The Director of the Health Department estimates, these are always a little bit behind, like this is the week of January 30th, is estimating that the metrics that come out March 1st. They're anticipating that DuPage County will move to the moderate level if all these trends continue over the next couple of weeks. And again, this is what the various transmission levels and how we move to moderate, you can see, and again, we're trending that way. And then in terms of what that means for the schools, again, at moderate, we're still having the same mitigations. And so there are still some limiting factors with that. So it's not, you know, the fact that we transition to moderate means that all of a sudden we'll be able to return to school as normal. Again, just to remind everyone, our criteria for the second semester, assuming a positivity rate, the average for the Westmont community is well below the 10%. Our new cases are now less than 200, so we're in good shape there. And we haven't seen any outbreaks in our schools. We've been able to maintain our staffing and so again, we're anticipating remaining in hybrid. And again, this just kind of summarizes that as well. You can see that again, everything's trending in the correct direction and we continue to be in the hybrid mode. Just a quick update on vaccine, and I always have to remind myself of this, but we're only, this is only week three that Tier 1B has been eligible for the vaccine. So there's a lot of anxiousness, a lot of anxiety. Definitely we want to see our staff to, you know, we want to see them receive the vaccine. But again, there's a large group in DuPage County that is eligible for the vaccine. All the school districts, you know, we're doing everything we can to position ourselves so that we can, when it's distributed to our district, we'll be ready for that. We currently have two partners now. We're with the Westmont Pharmacy. Sam has been, been great to work with because one of the steps is the provider has to notify the Health Department when they have their PIN and how many vaccines they're looking for, for the school district they're working with. Sam wasn't getting a response by phone, email, so he drove out to the Health Department in order to place our orders. So he's going above and beyond. We're also partnering with OSCO because OSCO has helped other districts, although that pipeline, the Health Departments are now working with the pharmacies and basically telling them that they can't work independently with the school districts. They need to, you know, follow the procedures and the priorities that are set. And so in some cases, you're circumventing populations that have a higher priority in order to vaccinate schools. And so that's why they're kind of curtailing that. The Page County Health Department made it clear that they're prioritizing areas with high positivity rates, over 65 and high risk. And they look at the community and so one thing, I mean, we have a great low positivity rate, but that means that the need isn't as great in our community, but there could be other factors, our population that's over 65, other risk factors. But they, they don't look at school personnel though. They look at that as a different light because typically, school populations are white and under 65. And so a community may have a high need, but not necessarily the school personnel. And so that's one of the reasons why we're not necessarily seeing through the Health Department, a lot of vaccine making it to school districts because they do, they are prioritizing populations. They made it very clear, everybody will get vaccinated, but it's going to take a couple of months for that to happen. So, but we're still putting pressure, trying to make that happen. Then in terms of the summer acceleration program, we've had one meeting with the Page ROE on the 9th. And so this is more information about the process and the process we're going through over the next couple of weeks. But you know, basically, we identified what the concern is and this, I think is what everybody shares. We know that we have students who are going to need some additional support over the summer. At the same time, our staff, our teachers are working extremely hard right now. And so, you know, it's, you know, you're trying to balance that, you know, some burnout, some fatigue, and we're going to be relying on some of those same people to work with our students over the summer. So part of it is trying to support our teachers as a county. There's always a challenge with districts having space for summer school programs because if you have capital projects, we actually have a couple of capital projects this summer, but we're fortunate that we can, you know, it's not on, you know, it's not happening across all of our buildings, so we can still maintain space for a summer school program. And then again, it's, you know, I always say that we're flying the plane, we're fixing the plane, we have to get to our destination. So we're trying to do these things and at the same time now, we're trying to focus on summer and the needs for our students for the summer. And so, you know, the idea of the districts in DuPage County kind of pulling their resources together, try to make this happen makes a lot of sense. So what we're looking to do is create a countywide summer school program that's engaging, it's fun, we're taking care of those learning gaps and focusing on the students that each district identifies as those students who would benefit from it, not only focusing on the academics, but also the social emotional learning as well. So currently, right now, each district is identifying those skills, you know, those standards that our students need to be successful for that next grade. So our kindergarten teachers are looking at the kindergarten standards, kindergarten skills and saying, okay, in order for our students to be successful at the first grade, minimally, these are the things they need to have at the end of kindergarten. Same thing for first grade all the way through, we're doing that currently. All that information is going to be shared with the ROE. And then the ROE is going to then identify consultants that can work with our teachers in developing the curriculum that they'll need for the summer and then also staff development. So that if you're having a hard time finding a, you know, maybe a first grade teacher who really wants to do the summer program, they can work with a fourth grade teacher on what they're going to need to do during that summer session for the first grader. So they'll provide the staff development as well. They'll work with our teachers, provide the staff development, and then they'll also assist with communicating the program out to the various communities. The, right now, and this is all kind of tentative, we're communicating, we're discussing this, but tentatively, we're looking at a six-week program that would run July 14th through the 23rd, from 8:30 to 11:30, Monday through Thursday. That's very similar to programs we've ran in the past, same number of hours, same days of the week. Again, focusing on the SEL, team building, the academics, math and literacy. At the high school level, the focus might be more credit recovery, but we're also thinking about freshman students, ninth graders who didn't have the typical ninth grade experience. And so there might be some things that, you know, along the lines of executive functioning that those freshman students did not get that first year that we want to focus on, then also that transition from eighth grade to high school. Each school would be charged with identifying, using their own criteria and identifying students who would benefit from the program. There would be no fee for students and then each school district would be responsible for transportation to the various programs. So what the districts are doing, again, identifying students in their buildings who would be invited, trying to recruit interested teachers. The ROE is also going to be working on finding teachers, some retirees, possibly students who have just graduated from college, who have received their licensure. The other thing is sites, we are planning on having a summer school program and so we will be a site. And at this point, we're also open to other students from other districts as well if they want to come, but definitely we'll be able to have host our own students at our Again, we're trying to find, you know, those teachers who are highly qualified, who would be excellent for this program. The DuPage ROE is going to be recruiting as well. And then also instructional coaches, reading specialists, trying to get our best people involved in the program. Again, I already mentioned that site locations, we're already planning on hosting K through 12 in our district with again, the nine through 12 probably more focused on that credit recovery. We would pay for our own students, we transport it, which we have done in the past. And then as far as covering the cost, districts can use it, use the CARES money, S seed funds as well to help. And then, or, you know, if we don't accept students from other districts, then it would just be our own students and we'd be paying our staff like we would normally do. So the next steps, today we sent off, again, that information from our district that our students need, those gaps, those that we're trying to close. And then there's a learning loss committee that will develop the skills for each grade level and then identify those experts that can come in. And then we have our next meeting on the 18th to continue the process with the ROE. But, you know, I think we have a framework. I think it is going to be beneficial. One of the things I think that will help, it's always a challenge, finding teachers who want to teach during summer school, I think this summer especially, but I think the fact that there's so much support for staff, I'm hoping that that's enough to entice teachers to want to be a part of the program. But, you know, we will be focused on that learning loss, we will have a program in place for those students. And with that, I'll open to any questions people may have.
So a couple of questions. One on the vaccine, just really quickly, is DuPage still expecting kind of a three-ish month completion for folks in 1B so that hasn't been extended, we're still kind of
Right, we're still at the three months.
Anticipating end of April-ish. Okay, cool. So before the school year is over, hopefully anybody, any of our teachers who want to be vaccinated will be able to be vaccinated, which is awesome. ROE, what is that an acronym for?
Regional Office of Education.
Thank you. Okay, cool. Okay, so, education, cool. Was there a fee for summer school in previous years? Like when we
Right.
When we ran it on our own, if you will?
Right. Most programs, no. There were a couple of programs, there might have been a small fee, but most of our programs, I don't think we
It depends on the program.
Depending on the program.
Okay. I wasn't sure because I've never, I haven't had experience in this district with summer school. So, and I just, I just want to say, I think it's really awesome that doing this collaboratively, it gives the teachers who need breaks, breaks, and the teachers who, you know, are in for it, the opportunity to be in for it. I think it's great that we are, that we've raised our hands as a potential location also. And that pooling of those intellectual resources, especially this year when everybody's burnt out, you know? So, thank you and thanks for, thanks for kind of laying that out really well. I look forward to seeing more information.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I think it looks really great. I think it's sad we have a learning loss committee, but I'm so glad there's a committee that's like dedicated to looking at that. So that's super reassuring. And I was also really happy to hear you mention that as far as, you know, the teacher burnout thing, the recent graduates from college, I think they've got some really young, talented teachers who are hungry for some experience and experience, you know, one-on-one with kids. So I think that's a great resource to tap, kind of along the lines, I think, of where Leo was headed. Do you know, and I know that some of this can be funded with the CARES Act you said, but compared to previous years, what will this summer program cost us as a district? Would it be more, less, or comparable?
For us, it would be, if it's just our students, it would be comparable.
Okay.
Because we've run the summer programs, pretty much the same number of days. Some years we've booked in the summer with doing it, but for ours, the cost would probably pretty much be the same. If we do pick up students from another district, that sending district would help offset the cost.
Great, that's great. And then my last question is just, do you have any idea approximately how many students will be able to accept into the program or that might depend on the schools or?
Yeah, it'll depend on the schools. But yeah, it's difficult to, you know, basically, any, here's, the plan would be any student that would require summer school will have a seat. You know, we're not going to create a situation where we're going to have to
Turn someone away.
Do some type of lottery or turn somebody away.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Kevin, I have a quick question and I echo everybody's thoughts on how great this is. When you say students are invited, how do we make sure that, I mean, I know in the past, we've had summer school programs and the participation may be off the charts, the participation also might be really under what we have expected. So like, what's your thought for how we really encourage participation for those students who really need the program? And if it means family supports? I mean, I think, you know, there's a lot to why maybe people haven't participated in the past in terms of transportation and getting them childcare and how the day is structured and all of that stuff, so.
And, you know, some of those issues, we'd be able to assist with. The transportation, for instance, we would provide transportation. I would imagine that, you know, there will be home visits involved for, you know, families that are reticent about sending their child, home visits and trying to problem solve and provide those resources that are limiting them from participating.
Right.
But we'll be working very hard, you know, for the students, those students who need to be in that program, we'll be working very hard to get them in the program.
So it'll be an active invitation?
Right, right.
Yeah, okay. That's great. I also think potentially, and I know this is down the road, so potentially like coordinating with the Park District Summer Camp Program or wherever kids need to be for childcare outside of summer school could be very helpful with participation.
I agree with Laura with that sentiment of, because something that struck me, your presentation was that, you said the students that need the support are not the students that are coming or maybe participating in other opportunities that teachers and school administrators are trying to reach out to get them. So that's something that I had a question too, like how are we getting them if we're already meeting challenges with that? But on the other side of it, I don't know if this, this is a big focus and I agree, like we have to make up what was lost in this time, but do you, like we had last year, other years, there are other opportunities for students to do summer activities or summer enrichment. Do you anticipate that you'll have any of those or we focus on this much needed?
Right now, we've been focused on this. We haven't had that conversation. It's something that, you know, we can discuss as an admin team, but right now, the focus has been on a little learning loss.
So I have a question about hybrid and I'm not sure, I know we're going to do a view of the hybrid model, but I guess my question isn't so much, my thought right now isn't so much about how we do hybrid as in where we're going for next quarter. So I think I'll bring it up here. So for the update of our school year, I know parents were sent home a memo about what they were going to choose, a Google form about what they're going to choose for hybrid or remote learning for fourth quarter. I know at a previous meeting, the day we had the board retreat, we had talked about what we would revisit what fourth quarter would look like before we had that. And I was just curious of when that discussion could happen at a board level, when it makes sense. I understand that administrators have to plan way in advance.
Right. And we can probably, you know, if the board wants at the next board meeting, we can have that discussion. Part of it, part of what potentially can look like is also driven by what parents opt for because, again, I don't anticipate, I mean, this could change, it possibly could change, but right now, I'm anticipating we'll still have the same mitigations in place. So the masks, you know, six-foot social distancing. There's some discussion about the social distancing changing, but as of right now, it's still six-foot. And so some of those present challenges as to what we can do with our buildings. And so then that's also driven by the number of students, you know? Give you an example, you know, for instance, right now, if the number of hybrid students remains the same at the high school as what we currently have, there's a very real possibility we wouldn't have to do an AB schedule, you know? So, and I, you know, I know that would be welcomed by parents. At the same time, if though, we're seeing a great influx of students who want to be in person at the high school, we may not be able to do that. And again, it comes down to how many bodies we can have in a classroom socially distanced. So those are, one of the reasons why we want to get those numbers to kind of see where people are at. But then at the next board meeting, we can talk about some of those modifications we're looking at.
That would be great. I don't know if the board's in agreement that that would be a good discussion topic.
Yeah, well, I think along those lines, one thing that we talked about a little bit before was just the plan, alternate plans to get into that full day for the fourth quarter, since the vaccination's happening a little bit more slowly than we anticipated. And when the high school was in for full days, they didn't have any problems with transmission. And Dr. Fauci, as he was addressing everything going on with the Chicago Teachers Union, reiterated once again that transmission's just not happening in schools really. And so I would just encourage, again, the administrative teams to really be brainstorming other alternatives. How can we get those kids in for that full day, starting on March 8th, which is very, very soon. So to Dana's point, I think if we could see some stuff at the next meeting, some proposals or plans, how can we make that happen or alternative solutions, just a little brainstorming. I think if we could get these kids in, maybe not all of them in the building, but at once, but for full days to finish the year really strong, that would also just help them so much and finish the year in a really strong way, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, so we've talked about it in the past and we've talked about the teachers getting vaccinated. I agree, that doesn't look like it's going to happen anytime soon or on a good timeline in terms of the school year. The other issue we've been trying to problem solve for was lunch, is that correct? That's the other big thing that like, maybe when the weather warmed up, we could have the kids eat lunch outside. I guess I'm curious too with the, you know, that we have medical experts who have said that kids being in school doesn't promote transmission. Is that full day? You know, are those, are those recommendations coming from a full day of school and those students are eating lunch together? Because that would make me feel a little bit better if I, if I knew that.
I believe they are, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would make me feel better that kids are eating lunch together and, and together and, and, you know, doing the things that we're saying we don't, we're afraid will make a big difference in transmission.
Yeah.
That would make a big difference for me personally, if we knew that those recommendations were based on studying a full day where they're eating lunch right next to each other.
I don't think they're full data on that, because it takes, it's so hard to have all that. They, they have numbers and what's been transmitted, but there are so many different schools and the way that some schools put their mitigation processes in place, it may be way different than another school. So I think they have that information overall, but if they, they're gathering, because this is all new, this is, you know, a new thing to study, but I don't think they've had the numbers to say, okay, this school, all schools with these mitigations, with this in place.
Right.
This is what you have. I think it's, it's hard to do it, but, so they have more overall data that says, you know, the numbers have been safe, but it's just so many different avenues that they look at.
Absolutely. What I would say though, and we've talked about this, is that we're really lucky to be a smaller district.
Yeah.
And we have pretty good funding, and so I think our mitigation is solid. I think we're an example of one of those schools where the transmission would not be a problem on campus.
Absolutely.
And as you know, we've also seen the private schools and Catholic schools making headlines nationally for being open in full days and, and doing so safely. So I just think if we can just push a little for that fourth quarter, that would be huge, a huge success for us.
Yeah, I don't have any issue.
And I think it's, I really, really believe that it would be safe.
Yeah. I don't have any issue having the conversation in the next meeting. Joel, I don't know if you're...
No, I think that's fine. I think that's obviously our goal, you know, as we've expressed all along, is to move in that direction. It's just a matter of, you know, is it the right time?
Right.
I think, you know, it's looking, it's looking more positive for sure.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't realize that the fourth quarter starts so soon. I was just looking at the calendar, oh my gosh, that's soon.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to, you know, kind of toss in there that, that piece about the different schools having, having slightly different needs, right? The, the Miller kids having a different challenge with having a break on Wednesdays versus the high school kids, and, and Manning and the junior high. And then also just understanding kind of the logistics around that. So, you know, what, what sanitation protocols are in place and what it would take to expand those to kids using kind of multiple, multiple kids using multiple desks, which I understand happens at the junior high and the high school, but doesn't at Miller and Manning where they're a little bit more pods. So just kind of understanding those logistical concerns, and then if there's any effect on kind of the, the budget as that applies, right? So would it mean that we would need some more, more overtime hours for any of our staff that's helping out there? That, just kind of where that plays into it as well.
I just wanted to say, I've been happy to have the conversation at the next meeting. I think it is an important discussion piece. I would hope that you would come with a couple of recommendations for us, and maybe even put it on as an action item so that we make the decision for the final quarter. So the community would know that. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but just having a discussion's one thing, but, you know, actually agreeing to it or taking a different course of action, that should be up to the board.
I think it looks like from the nodding of heads that an action item would, we have a majority to have an action item.
Bring us a recommendation with your new information, Kevin?
It depends on if there's multiple recommendations or if there's one recommendation.
Sure.
So I think let's wait and see what, what Kevin brings, and, and we'll know more at the agenda meeting, I think, too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Joel, just to clarify, if, if Kevin brings, I think what Gary's saying is not that we're voting on if we go in person or not, but that, do we have a majority of the board that feels that it should be an action item for next meeting? Because we can't add an action item at that meeting, is that correct?
Well, I don't think we need, number one, I don't think we need an action item for this issue, because the superintendent, you know, makes that decision. And if we just agree with that and give consensus to that, then that, it doesn't have to be an action item. You see what I'm saying?
What if we all don't agree?
Yes.
What if the majority doesn't?
Well, then you would give the superintendent direction that that's not what, what you want, right? So it doesn't have to come as a formal action item.
And then I go and...
Can't, it can be.
Well, I just, to Jess's point, that March 8th is coming fast. I think the community would like, like, I don't know, newer information, I guess is really more my point. We are, you know, things are getting better. People are seeing, you know, the country starts to reopen a little bit. Are we going to have a fresh approach to the fourth quarter or not? I guess is really all the board really wants to know. Right? Okay, and what would that look like if we did? Right? So, I mean, I, I agree with Joel, it doesn't have to be an action item, because we, we don't have to vote on everything, and it is a superintendent decision. So I just didn't know if there was a way of clarifying it better. But if he comes to us with a plan and, and we don't agree with it, I think it's only happened one time in, in my 10 years. So, you know, I'm fine, fine with that course of action too.
So what's the difference, help me understand the board's role, because what's the difference between next meeting's action, or that being not the board's decision, but the superintendent's decision, poor Kevin's?
Well, I mean...
This is nothing, versus August's decision on which direction we are taking. I'm very confused on what the board's role is here.
I think the decision in, in August, it was obviously all new, right? And we were looking for our place in, in that. And, you know, we set up a kind of a framework of what we were going to operate under and said, this is the framework, and we handed that off to Kevin, and basically he implemented that framework.
So why aren't we having the same voice in this scenario?
Because, well, I, I view it all as one issue, is we already gave that framework, and he would come to us with different recommendations. I mean, think back on our board's self-evaluation and the types of things we talked about there. So we charged the superintendent with the responsibility of running the district. So obviously, we have oversight responsibility, and, you know, we can set different directions. But I don't know, I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to having a vote on it, but I just don't know if it has to be that definitive at that, at next meeting.
Because it wouldn't necessarily be a new framework. We've already approved the framework.
We've kind of approved the framework, and now we're, we're either kind of modifying or giving Kevin latitude to modify it based on what, you know, he knows and interactions with the staff and students and parents. So, we certainly can, if it's something that's, but if he comes to the next meeting and he needs further input, needs to take it back somewhere else, and, and, you know what I mean, then we're not going to have an action item, we're just going to table that, so.
I guess, if, if I may, I feel like the issue though of full day versus half day is like, it's not just a small tweak in this plan. And when we voted for the, voted on this, and when we were presented with the hybrid plan in August, the high school was in full days, and I was under the impression that the other schools would seek to get to full days, not that the high school would go to half days. And so it feels like a bit of a regression, and also different from what was presented in August. And so it just feels like we're going backwards a little versus forward. So, and I guess, you know, the, the framework, yes, and like the tweaking that, you know, I don't think we need to vote on every single tweak that's happening, but we're talking about instructional time at an incredibly vital point in the school year where these kids are finishing up. So it does feel like a big deal to me.
And generally, it feels like within this whole process, it has been boards that have ultimately been held responsible for the decisions that were made about which form of learning the district was taking. So definitely don't want to get on the dance floor with the nuances of the administrative team and how they choose to implement, but the overall direction and vision of the district of what instruction looks like in this time does feel like a balcony decision to me, not a dance floor decision.
I, I mean, I'll be honest, I'm on the fence, because I feel like, to what Joel said earlier, we set the framework in the beginning, and there's been lots of decisions that impacted instructional time and quality, quality, I shouldn't say quality, just time, face time, since then, that we've left to Kevin. So when we went to full remote, when we had to in the fall, we left that to Kevin. When we went back to hybrid in January, we left that to Kevin. Now we're talking about, do we go from hybrid to full day? Is that a Kevin decision, or is this where the board inserts itself back in? I think it's, I think it's up to us whether we want it to be, you know, I think you're right, we set the framework, and we've let Kevin kind of run now. I mean, I feel like a lot of board members are weighing in that maybe they'd like some voice in that decision. I, I'm on the fence, so, and can be swayed either way, frankly, because I think we've been a little bit inconsistent, or this would be an inconsistency with how we've handled it since the beginning.
I, I kind of feel the same. We've been on the fence of how, how much we vote to change. I do feel like we set a framework and made a decision that we were hybrid and, you know, have a mix of in-person and remote learning. And the board has spoken at times even this year to say, okay, we are asking Kevin, let's look at our guidelines. We didn't have to vote on that. We asked him to look at our guidelines to say how we would manage, how we would pivot between both, and we did that. Kevin came back with data to say, you know, we can change, that we can look at Westmont or our surrounding communities, to look at how we maintain hybrid learning versus home or remote learning. And I kind of look at that, some ways the same, but also to remind that going full in-person is a huge step. There's so many other steps. I think Leah asked about cleaning and the support for that. It's different at the elementary school than it would be at the high school, and how kids are eating lunch, and you get breaks. All those are not small steps that need to be organized and presented. And so, and I'm, myself, I don't, I'm not ready to vote on something without hearing.
Right.
Your, your suggestions and your proposals on how, if we were to go to full learning, this is what I see that we need to do. This is the money we would need to help with cleaning and maintaining, you know, our great safety measures and our mitigations. So, I don't know if we need a vote to say that. I, I think we're asking for direction and input and advice on how we can move to full remote. And then we can take a look at that and say, this is doable, we can do this. It's, I think it's a huge step that we want, but we still have a lot of things to look at and consider.
Can I just clarify, because I feel like we're throwing around different terms, like full in-person, full remote, hybrid. We would still be in hybrid learning, we're just looking at half-day versus full day. I just wanted to make that clear. And again, the district has shown that they have successfully done full days with lunches in a safe way. So I'm not sure it's as daunting as a task. And so I think where we're at right now is we would just like to, maybe at the next meeting, hear what the plans are to get to the full days, beyond just we're waiting until that vaccination, because I don't know that we have the luxury of that time before, you know, these kids seem to be back in as soon as possible.
So, so kind of, what, what I'm hearing is the potential for voting for, we would like the kids to be full day, as if kind of using that direction or, or making that direction very official from, from a board standpoint. But what I, I feel like we have, that has been our push all year. When we approved the, from the very first plans, the very first plans always had a, how do we get to full day? And we asked for those goalposts to be adjusted, based on more information, and Kevin and the administration have adjusted those goalposts based on our discussions, so that our kids are in hybrid right now and are able to get that information. So I, I'm, I'm a little on the fence. I don't know that we need to vote again, because in, 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 I feel like we have already, we have already done that. We have already said, we want our kids to be full day. What do we need to get there? And like, what we need to hear is, what, what do we need to do to get there? Do we have enough money? Are our teachers bought in? Is the community bought in, which I think we'll find out from that, from the survey, right? So I don't, I don't know. I can see a, a, a potential for needing or having an action item, but I also, I also see this, I feel like we already said, this is where we want to be at, how do we get there? And that, and that every time that we have kind of pushed, and we've been pushing all year, really, the administration has flexed where we've been able to flex. So I don't know that we necessarily need a, need an action item, because we've all said, this is our goal.
Right.
And we want those kids. And, and understanding, I do under, I don't know that the high school did full day without, they didn't necessarily have transmission issues, but it, it kind of sounded like they had some concern around kind of overall, some concern around, around security or potential transmission issues. And then on, on the younger ages, it, it kind of sounds like there's some pieces of that in-school and then at-home piece, especially as it pertains to, to reading comprehension with the younger grades, that they kind of can't get socially distanced in person, that they can get when they're on their iPads, which kind of adjusts that. So just, I don't know that we need an action item. I feel like we did that a couple, a while back, but I could also see some space for it, so.
You know, I, I agree, I'm not sure, I agree, we all want to be in full days, but I guess it's, for me, it's like the sense of urgency of like, what's the plan to get us there, besides just waiting on the vaccination? And I agree with you about the high school, and, you know, we don't know if there were issues and, and whatnot. I mean, I think part of, and I have no idea where the change comes from, but like, if I'm in a district with teachers who are only in half-day, and I'm being asked to teach full day, you know, I don't know if that's part of the issue, but rather than taking everybody to half-day, let's take everybody to a full day, in my mind, especially, you know, just for the, the little kiddos to get them, and all of the kids, to get them the instructional time that they deserve, one-on-one with their teachers. I think just that urgent, it's the sense of urgency. And I think a deadline helps with that, and so that's where fourth quarter was. And again, not realizing it was as early as it is, so.
I just want to say that the admin team, the teachers, we all have a sense of urgency. And we know that, you know, in-person instruction is the best form of instruction. We know that. And our goal is the same. We want to get back to full-day instruction, but as Dana pointed out, there's, there's a lot of steps that have to take place. The high school was in, in full days for two weeks. So I don't know if that's necessarily a, a good enough sample to know that they successfully did it without a high level of transmission. You know, we're, the, the, the challenge is, when you, when you have lunch, students have to remove their masks, and they have to be socially distanced. And it's a, it's a very difficult, you know, atmospheric environment to control, especially the younger of the students, because they're not used to that, you know? So, we're, we're trying to work through those, those things. We're also limited to 50 individuals in a space, and they have to be socially distanced. I, in my, and we're kind of touching base on this in the, in the hybrid memo I did for you, could you have students eat lunch in their classroom? Yes, you can. But now you got to figure out supervision for those students. You know, by contract, employees get a duty-free lunch, and so you have to figure out, okay, who's supervising? Well, somebody's having lunch and then reversing that. And then those areas should probably be sanitized before they, they continue being used for instruction. So, there's all these things that need to be worked out. And the other, the other driver, I'll tell you, is the reason why Miller, and it's okay, we transition a little bit to the hybrid model, the, the, one of the reasons why Miller is able to, their, their model's different. They have students that are remote and students that are in-person, and the same teacher doesn't have to instruct both groups. And that's because they have a very small number of students who opted for remote. And so that class load for that remote teacher is manageable. We don't have those numbers in the other buildings. And so to have at Manning, one first-grade teacher be 100% remote, they're the remote teacher, that class size is going to be very large, because of the number of children that are in remote. And so, in that case, the, the teacher has to teach both, we call them rumors and zoomers. They have to teach the rumors, and they're teaching the zoomers as well. And so that's why, you know, parents who have their children in hybrid, they're seeing their students on a, on a screen. So, and the same thing is true of the junior high and the high school. When you start talking about all day for the junior high and the high school, it is a little bit different dynamic, because every passing period, they're, they're switching classes, you know? So there, there's all these elements that we are considering. Our goal is, I can, you know, trust me, our goal is to get our students back full day. The other thing that limits us is we have to offer a, a remote option. You know, I don't know if other schools have to offer a remote option or not, but we're required to offer a remote option, and, you know, and you have to do both well, right? If we could focus on just remote learning, or hybrid learning, or in-person learning... If we could focus on just remote learning or hybrid learning or in-person learning, I mean, you know, we, we, we would be able to do it that much better, but we have to be able to work with both environments. And I, and I think our people are doing a great job. Under these circumstances, I think they're doing an outstanding job. But yes, I will bring to the board a plan at the next forming and how we can transition to, to full days.
Please let me apologize. This, that was not intended to be a criticism towards you or towards the teachers. I've said it a million times and I'll say it a million more times, like amazing work that's being done. And, and so, I apologize for that if that's how it came across with the statement about the sense of urgency. But what we, what we'll see at the next meeting, I think, is maybe what I was hoping to see at this meeting, since we had talked a little bit about this at the previous meeting, just what that game plan is. And we've been in this pandemic for a while. And so, the plan of how does lunch look and what does the traffic pattern look like and, and all of that, you know, I just, hopefully we'll be able to see some things for that full-day stuff. Thank you for that.
And I agree. I, I don't think it's a criticism. I think I was just hopeful for more of a stepwise plan of what our barriers were, especially because our transmission rates have been so low and we've been doing hybrid without issues. So, even if it's a recommendation of, and I was hoping that for more of this meeting as well, that we would have, these are the barriers, we, we're still figuring out lunch or we're really, these schools might look great for moving towards and these schools we would like to keep. But I just want to feel like we're actually taking steps. The commitment is there. And I think there's a lot of work being done there too, but I don't think that is getting to the board, at the board level, or even to the parents in the community in the way that there is a progression there. And that progression might not happen. There could be a very, you know, a different strain and everything, we could be in remote in two weeks. That's a reality of this, you know, best-laid plans, but definitely appreciate the work. Just want to see where our plan is going forward.
So, are we asking for like a fourth quarter, like a fourth quarter, this is the plan for fourth quarter at the next meeting? Is that what, is that what, like just very clearly, this is the plan starting March 8th? March 8th? Is that the right, is that the first day of fourth quarter? Starting Q4 for our families? Everybody's returned their survey or the majority of people returned their survey and this is the plan, this is what we're doing? Is that what we're gonna, is that what we're asking for? Not necessarily recommendations, but a, this is the plan?
Well, I mean, I think you, you can't ask necessarily for a solid recommendation. For example, just like Dana said, if we have a surge with a variant, which is something that's being talked about and predicted, then that throws all of these plans, you know, back into hybrid. So, we always have to have the, the flexibility and options. And so, I think it's fair to ask Kevin to come to the meeting with a recommendation that the board would like to see, what is it going to look like to go back, you know, full-time? And ask for that. But that is still, can still be mixed in with discussions about, you know, what the current rate is, you know, what the current metrics are and that sort of thing. So, I think, yes, definitely we can get a, a little more of a solid picture of what it will look like if we're, if we're going to be able to transition back to a more of a full-day learning environment.
And maybe Kevin's recommendation is that we don't do that for these specific reasons. And then we know where we're heading, I think, a little bit more clear.
And I, I want to remind the board too that I, I think we've had some of those things stated, eating lunch, supervision, cleaning. We have those out there.
We've talked about.
We, this, the governor just changed our, you know, our tier and our, you know, what phase we're in right now. This isn't a long time. We, we haven't spent a long time at these low rates. You know, we've steadily been climbing down, so we can't, you know, we are asking for decisions to be made, but we also have to realize a lot of things are out of our control. So, yes, every, I think everyone at the, agreed, there is agreement that everyone wants to have kids in school all day. But we have to consider all those things. We can, I think we can ask for those plans, like if, how would it look? I think initially, the very, very first plan, I think back in August, was looking at all-day and how we could do that. And it didn't pan out at that time. So, I, you know, and I don't, I didn't hear criticism either, but I do, do think we have to keep in mind that the, the rate of transmissions and the number of cases we have right now is, been a short time period considering we've been in this pandemic for a year. So, and that there are other strains, like we remain cautious. So, I do appreciate, you know, looking at ways, you know, can we open it up? Can it be before it gets warm or other ways? I think we can brainstorm, storm those types of things and maybe get suggestions if we have it. I think it brings us into our next discussion item. This is something I'm interested in as a way, if we are increasing time in schools, how can we, you know, instead of waiting for rates to come back, how can we have very good data for ourselves to say how we're doing? So, I think that's one way to, to look at kind of police.
And also being cognizant of, we don't want, we don't want anybody to reinvent the wheel every two weeks.
Right, exactly.
This is hard, right? It is hard on everybody, but there's no interest in reinventing the wheel every two weeks or every four weeks. Because it doesn't help our kids, doesn't help our staff, it doesn't help our parents, doesn't help anybody to reinvent the wheel every, every two, three, four weeks, which, which I think is very, very true as well. So, there's, there's a lot of balances, yeah.
I also just want to make one comment, and I know we want to move on. I think that the board needs to own, if what Kevin presented tonight wasn't what some of us expected, the board needs to own that. I did not come into this meeting with an expectation that we were going to have a in-depth presentation on the plan to get us back into a full day of learning. And maybe that was me and something I missed in the last meeting, but I did not come into this meeting with that expectation at all. I, I'm going to say, I do not think that is your fault, Kevin. I do not think we set that expectation for you clearly. Maybe we did and I missed it, but I know, I mean, Joel and I have an agenda meeting. It wasn't on our, either of our radars to have a specific detailed presentation about getting back in-person full day in this meeting. So, I just want us to own that as a group and our accountability of being really clear with each other and with Kevin what our expectations are so that we don't end up coming back to the board table and, and, you know, feeling like there's tension between what we thought we were going to hear and what we hear. And again, maybe I missed it and that's my bad if I did, but.
Yeah, I wasn't really expecting that either. And I don't know if I gleaned it from emails that I received from board members in between the meetings. So, if there's an expectation.
But we talked about this at a meeting. And this is, this is an area I think we need to grow as a board. Because we had a very clear conversation about what we were going to do moving forward, that we wanted to revisit the fourth quarter, not at the, at our board retreat meeting right before, when we were still in open. And so, when I got a survey as a parent saying, what is your choice, hybrid or remote? I was kind, I called Joel and I was like, I'm kind of concerned about this because we haven't had a discussion and we said we were going to. So, I don't, I don't think we do, I think that you should hold us accountable, Laura, but I, I don't know how to better communicate getting us to move forward on what we want, maybe, and how we can make that clear. And moving forward in a timely manner in the direction that we want to go, or even what our direction is.
Which I, I understand. I mean, I think it's, that's, that's different though, you know, a direction that was set at a, a meeting we had a couple of weeks ago versus saying, on February 9th, this is what Kevin's going to have on the agenda. And, and again, maybe that's a, maybe that's a me and Joel thing that we need to get better at, is making sure all of those things get brought back to those agenda meetings. I just want to say, I don't think Kevin owns that in particular. And I'm having this conversation for the public so they can see us, you know, trying to figure out the things we're trying to figure out as a board too.
And I agree. I don't think that's Kevin's responsibility, but I think we need to do a better job of
Absolutely.
making sure we're following up on things brought at previous meetings and public comment and things so we can move forward.
And that's on all of us when we see the agenda come out and if there's any clarity that needs to be had about what specifically is going to be covered in each agenda item, et cetera. So, you know, I think we're really clear on what we're going to have in the next meeting. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to, do you have more to present on the hybrid, Kevin?
Well, just, you know, in terms of the hybrid that I, you know, it's contained in the memo, that again, some of what is happening in these buildings is dictated by the building. Again, that balance between remote and in-person, you know, and that's the challenge because, again, our, our staff is, is balancing both of those things. And, you know, again, I know some, some parents are concerned because their child is still looking at their Chromebook when they're in-person. But again, that's a, that's a different kind of screen time. And they're still interacting with their classmates, they're still interacting with the teacher. It's just not, you know, so there is a difference between those students who are remote and those students who are in-person. But, and again, you know, this, you know, as I mentioned, we were about, I think, two weeks in the fall. We've only been hybrid a couple of weeks now, you know? So, you know, we're, we're getting better at it, we're trying to get better at it, but, you know, it, it takes a little bit of time. And everybody's working really hard, but I think that our, our staff has stepped, stepped up to the challenge under very difficult circumstances.
Okay. Let's move on to COVID-19 testing.
All right. And so, there was a, a request for this on the agenda and some districts are either looking at it or may have, have already started doing some type of testing within their districts. Again, our current mitigations, we do social distancing of the six feet, personal protective equipment, we have the mask that everybody is required, and we do temperature checks and self-certification. The one thing that I want to make very clear is if we decide to go down the, the road of saliva testing, that it doesn't eliminate any of these mitigations. It's just, it's an additional mitigation, but it doesn't eliminate anything. It doesn't necessarily get us more students in the, in the door because we're, we're doing saliva testing. There is a, a company safeguard surveillance. It's actually a board member in Legrange 102, Dr. Campbell, who developed the test. And it's one of the more popular ones that has been adopted by other districts. The purpose is to identify potential COVID-19 early. It's not diagnostic. If a student or a staff member receives a positive test, they're still going to have to go for a test to confirm that it is COVID-19. If they don't go for the test, then they have to go through the quarantine, the 14-day quarantine period unless, again, they get a negative test. The one possible challenge will be, we're a diverse district. We have some families that, you know, can go to a doctor, pay for a COVID-19 test. It's not a problem. Their child's back in school in a, in a couple of days. Other families may not have that same benefit. And so, their child is going to be quarantined for 14 days because they may not have the means to get the PCR test. So, it's something to keep in mind when we consider this. The basic process on paper, it's simple, but there is some, some management on the district's part. But students and staff would sign consent forms. The test tube, the vials are sent home and then the vials are collected at home, the samples are collected at home, they're brought to school, they're all, they're sealed, coded, so the lab knows what sample came from what person. The samples go to the lab and then the results are provided to the school. The school is only not notified of positive results, they're not notified of, of negative results. And then in the event that there is a positive result, that starts the dominoes of contact tracing and further testing and quarantine. It would be done on a weekly basis, typically the beginning of the week. Again, every student is provided a tube to collect the sample. The results you typically get within 24 hours, you get the test. And again, only the positive tests are, are reported. The cost, this test is the more reasonable test, there are other tests that are more expensive, 20, $22. The test is $11 per test. The district costs, and this is based upon of our staff participating and then only the in-person students. So, this is taking into consideration that we don't have all of our students in-person. It'd be approximately $11,000 a week. And then, you know, just estimating when we would start the program to the end of the school year, you're looking at a cost of about $155,000 for the year to implement it. And again, just to reiterate that, you know, the, the testing is just one other mitigation, but it doesn't eliminate anything that we're currently doing. We'd still be required to socially distance, still be required to wear masks, still required to do those things. But it is one other thing that, that could be done.
I have a question for you. I, I have done some research on this, but I had a question. I saw different models. So, with this model, and I thought I read it, maybe in the memo, it's, it wouldn't be mandatory, is that correct?
Right. It wouldn't be mandatory because, you know, all this is new, COVID-19 and everything. And if you mandate it, then there's the potential that a, the family refuses to have their child participate. Then as a school district, we say that child cannot attend in-person. So, now are we excluding a student? And can we exclude a student for that reason? And, you know, even Jeff Galitz, our attorney, isn't sure if we can do that or not and where the courts would fall on that if it got to that point. And so, my recommendation is that it would be, would be voluntary, it wouldn't be mandated so that we don't get ourselves in that scenario.
Is it something, also like looking at these different models and seeing how they started, that you start with a minimal number? Just as, I guess if you jumped a bunch of steps and say, we're starting this, is this something that you, you start, you can start with a small number and increase or?
Yeah, there, there is no economy of scale. So, whether you test 10 students or you test, you know, 1,100, it's, it's still only $11. That is a possibility that if you take a look at like our junior high, high school, for instance, those students are switching classes and so there's the whole mixing of different groups versus self-contained at the elementary level. So, you could introduce it at, with the older students first and seeing how it goes and then, you know, grow it from there if, if necessary. But I will say the districts that have implemented have gotten a, a very small percentage of positive tests, you know, most of the tests. And I think false negatives are very minimal, you know?
That was my follow-up questions with how districts were doing with this. One thing, it's not surprised, but I guess happy to see that it was well-received and they've kind of boasted that they're, they, I guess, perform safety faster, you know, in their districts, that if they do identify someone or it's put in place right away, then instead of the lag time and that, so they can contact trace and quarantine better. But on the opposite side, they're, when they have testing, I think there's in some, in some models where it's voluntary, where they ask to be tested, they're able to return kids to school faster or staff to work faster because they have at least that answer that is not COVID. So, they may be home for three days as opposed to 10 to 14 days. And it's decreased stress, they said, in that community, so they feel better, they've expanded, they've had a lot of success. I guess the few that I looked at, but I didn't know if you had a larger scale or if there's any information out there to superintendents on how many districts are doing it.
I don't have the exact number that are doing it. I know Gower is, Butler 99 has started, Liberty 7 has started, 102 has started. And I'm sure there's a few others. I know some districts are hesitant to start only because they're looking at it at cost-benefit if they're going to invest the money and it. if they're going to invest the money and it meant more students in the building. They see that as, you know, a good cost-benefit, but if it doesn't change the number of students they can bring into the building, they're not sure if that's the best place to put the dollars.
Well, I would just piggyback on top of that, I'm, you know, as much as I hate to say this out loud in a public meeting, but I pretty much have to, I'm not sure we have the money for this.
No.
Okay, and then the second thing I would like to say is, you know, people like to use the word inclusion a lot, so just because my student is in full remote, he's still a student in your district, why are you not offering this to my family also? And I think that could create a, a little bit of a problem for us too. And then, and then the number that's on that screen goes up dramatically, as, as much as I am all for testing and all that, I just, I'm not sure we have the money, or we would want to exclude some of the students that are actually 201 students. I mean, if, if you don't go to our school, fine, but these kids go to our school technically.
Yeah.
So I, I just, I see that as a can of worms also.
I totally agree with Gary. I'm glad you mentioned the cost-benefit, that's exactly what I was thinking in my mind, and I look at that number and I think two teachers. And, and so I'm just not sure we're in the position for it, and we've talked about how our really strong mitigation protocols already, and we've talked about the low transmission in schools, I'm just not sure that it's worth it. And you mentioned too that the schools using it have gotten really low
Right.
positive cases, so I, I'm not sure that it's worth it for this district at this time.
I think it's completely conceivable that, you know, a student could test negative on Monday and test positive on Tuesday. And so, yes, you may catch some, but you're certainly not going to catch all with a weekly screen like this, you'd really have to be testing every day, and you'd need to get that result ASAP. And also, I would worry about the turnaround time on the test, as more and more schools pile on and start sending specimens here, then it goes from one day to two day to three days before you get a result back, and that's less helpful. I also think our parents already are expressing a lot of interest in sending kids back to school full day without this being in place. And so, while I, I think it's, it'd be great if we had the money for it, but I think, you know, like you're saying, I, I don't think that there's a, there's going to be a big benefit, a benefit here. And I worry about the administration time. It sounds simple, oh, the kids collect their specimens and, you know, bring them to school, but somebody's got to log them in and, you know, transport them, and then handle the results when they come back and all the, and if there's contacts with families. So I, I think that'll, you know, involuntary participation, if you're not going to test everybody, it's, you know, it's less effective.
Just to keep in mind, like I, I understand, especially, I think this last screen is very important, but there, there are different ways, and I, you know, it's something that ISBE has, you know, put out there, information out there, there's so many different ways of doing this, some that I agree with, some that I've found that was very innovative, and basically a school district saying that we don't want to sit and wait, this is a way that we could, you know, do our new normal. And they've, they have different models out there that I think agree that it's beneficial, could be beneficial to us, or maybe not. And so they're just different models, this isn't the only way that they're handling testing, so I just, some of those presentations were very, you know, very, very good things to consider, and this included cost is a big thing, that's included.
I think it's amazing to see the information in the first place, right? You, you have to have the information in order to make a good decision or not, and in my opinion, it doesn't take a ton of time or cost to just get the information and get it out there. We could certainly not make a decision on testing without understanding the costs of it, and like what it logistically could look like for the district. You know, I've got some concerns about this type of test, kind of the viral load situation of it's not a COVID test, and then you'd have to get another test, and, and how diverse our district is as far as income. You brought it up perfectly, those, those students whose parents may have the time and the means to get a, get a test and get it real quickly, and they're right back in school, and the stu, and the parents who may not, that's concerning for me, I certainly don't have any interest in making it harder to get into school for our kids. So I think this is great information and good to know that it's out there, I just don't know that it is logistically what we need to do right now. And, and kind of the biggest thing that kept going through my head as you were kind of going through it and talking about the other, the other districts that have done it, is I, I wanted to ask, what did it solve? Right? Because if we're going to spend $11,000 a week, or $160,000, give or take, a year, what does that solve? Right? What problem does it solve? And if it doesn't ultimately solve a problem, if it doesn't, if it's not like the gateway to our kids being in school full day with lunch, with all the media, with all the current media, right, if it's not that gateway to like get us to where we want to be at, I don't know that it's worth that, that cost-benefit analysis for me. But I also know that I never could have made that decision if I didn't have this information, and that's really, really helpful. So thank you. And maybe it is a, maybe it is kind of a longer term, depending on what happens with these terrifying variants that are out there for the 2021, 2022 school year, to explore some other options that might be more effective for us. I don't think it's necessarily off the table, but I think there's a lot of concerns, and just concerns around like, how many people would actually opt in, making my kids spit in a thing, and giving it to the district, and maybe that's just too much, and kind of some bodily property situations that we don't need to open those cans of worms.
I think it's something that, that we don't know where we're going to go with coronavirus. We hope that it disappears and goes away by the fall, and we're vaccinated, but it could still be here in the fall, and I think it's something to look at, you know, the other avenues. Once, once school district is very talk, and set where they started, and they started small, and they have a different model of how they use their testing, and it's open to every student, it's voluntary, every student, every teacher, even the community, so it's in-person and remote. And, you know, there are so many different steps in there, but I think it's something that we hopefully don't have to consider and use, but we may have to consider again, and it's, it's something to look at.
I also think there's an option, depending on what kind of stimulus package comes out of Washington, if there is money for something like this that is going to go to school districts, then we could certainly revisit this because it would not impact our, our, our own budget in the same way. So it's something to keep in mind and keep an eye out on that kind of financial incentives to, to, before we do something like this.
Again, they did use it as a, their gateway to opening fully, so I just thought that was a, a great example of, of a school that used it and had their own monitoring system to fall back on.
Okay, any other questions on COVID testing? Move on to the iReady update.
Oh, very briefly, I know the board asked for information on where our students are in terms of their learning as compared to prior years. The iReady window just closed, and so we will be, I, I should have that information for you for the next board meeting. So it just closed on Friday, the iReady window.
Okay. Tax increment financing revenues update.
Good evening, and I should have brought the slide, but hopefully people are looking in the board book at that. So for the newer board members, there is a tax increment financing district in the village, it's in the downtown area. Manning School is included in that TIF district. And so when we structured the, the deal with the village for that, the money that they agreed to give us to help offset some of the lost tax revenue to the district for the village implementing a TIF district can only be used for Manning School. And so they laid out what they thought, they had consultants that projected what the estimated payments to the district would be over a 16-year time period, and those are listed for you. And then, so if you look, we just received our year seven payment in the amount of $113,000. So to date, we've received $355,428. The projected payments would have been almost $3.5 million by this time. So you can see there's, the TIF has not taken off as the, as the consultant and that worked with the village anticipated. We did structure to receive, you know, the deal that we would receive $15 million in payments. And so it just kind of gives you an update of where we're at. Hopefully we are starting to see some development happening, and so we have seen an increase in those payments each year, but, you know, it's, it will remain to be seen if we actually hit that $15 million, you know, estimated payment amount over the course of the TIF. And then also, it's important to remember that $355,000, that is money is included in the O and M fund, fund balance. And so it's, it's not available to pay for, you know, any other, it's only available for projects, building improvements at Manning, it's not available for salaries, benefits, or to be spent on any other projects at any other buildings in the district. So I just wanted to give you an update so you can see where we're at, at this point in time. Does anybody have questions?
So did they, they, I'm, I'm not entirely sure, the TIF, I'm trying to wrap my head around it because it's, because I'm a new board member. Is the potential kind of these years like nine, 10, 11 in there when those, when those two new complexes are done, are they part of the TIF
Yes.
district? So we could potentially expect for those years to, to start getting
Hardly increasing.
a little bit more significant? And the, it's an estimate of the, of $15 million kind of as a total. Is there anything in that, like, we're just not getting it? So where would we, like, is there any kind of?
If it, if the TIF doesn't generate those revenues, yes, there's a potential that we do not receive the $15 million over the life of the TIF.
Okay, and then the money can only be used at Manning?
Correct.
And it can only be used for building stuff, O and M, it cannot be part of salaries, it can't be part of other, anything. Have we already started, have we already used some of the money that we've already taken in for building, or is it kind of going into an, into a fund within the O and M fund?
Yeah, it's, so when you see the investment balances, it's, it's in there, it's, it's segregated into its own bank account, it's included in the O and M fund, but no, we have not spent any of the money yet.
Okay, is it earmarked for anything, or have we earmarked it for anything?
Not yet. We're going to be doing some projects, a, a couple of projects over the summer, a little bit of pipe work and abatement at Manning, but right now, we're planning on using the school maintenance project grant, and that's part of our life safety funds. So we're going to see where that ends up, if we need to dip into this or not. But otherwise, at this point, we're just kind of building up that, that balance so that we can do something more impactful.
Okay, because Manning is our oldest school.
Correct.
Almost, almost 100 years, we're getting close to 100 years. And then kind of my last question, and this is more forward-thinking or thinking through this elementary planning, if the elementary planning, is there any potential for adjustment on this TIF if kids are going to, like, kids right now in the downtown area all go to Manning, but what about if some of those kids end up going to Miller or Manning, or if any of that split happens, is there any potential for the TIF being used at both the buildings? Or is it?
No, because only Manning is located in the TIF district, and those funds can, that's the way that was structured, only because Manning School is in the TIF district, so that money would never be able to be used for Miller.
Good to know. Thank you, and thank you also for kind of explaining that the TIF is sometimes hard to understand.
It's just encouraging to see that it's growing some finally, I know those first few years it was, it was pretty low, pretty low those first few years, so it is nice to see, and that apartment building obviously is going up, so that's, that's very nice to
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully again, as some new things come on that will drive further development as well, so hopefully we'll start seeing bigger increases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, policy first reading.
The policy committee, we've been meeting before our regular board meetings, and the goal has been to review our policy manual, make sure all of our policies are updated. And at the, prior to the January 26 meeting, we're reviewing sections four and five of the policy manual, we came across 4120 food service, and that is one that there's a more recent press policy. So what is attached in board docs is what is recommended by press, it's not that much different than our current policy, but today it's presented for the first reading. In addition, policies 481 and 482, those are unique to 201. In 2012, the board wanted a board policy around fund balances and debt management, and so the policy committee developed those two policies. And so the recommendation of the policy committee is that the finance committee reviews those two policies and determines if they need to be tweaked or any changes made, and then they would bring, that would be brought back to the full board then for first reading and, and adoption if there's any changes. In addition, there were three policies, 538, suspension of employees, 5121, prohibited political activity, and policy 5160, release of credit information. Those policies again were unique to 201, they don't appear in the press policy service or in other districts. We're finding out 2004 was a big year for our district to develop their own policies. Next board meeting, you're going to receive another series of policies that are unique. Jeff Galitz, our attorney, did review those policies and said that those policies are currently either covered by statute or other policies, and there's no need to have those anymore. So there is an action item to retire those policies.
Okay.
Joel, before we move on, and I apologize to the board, I'm going to ask for permission to add a discussion item here, hopefully it can be very quick, and I'm only going to do it if the majority of the board agrees with it. I sent out an email, we all received an email from that athletic parent, and he would like some type of direction from us to give to Kevin about potentially allowing attendees at home games for the, for the athletic events that are occurring. He did send me a follow-up email today or yesterday, I don't remember exactly when it was, and again, I apologize, I meant to get this on the agenda and I didn't, so I'm only going to continue if the board's okay having the conversation quickly to potentially give Kevin some direction as to what to do on this, or we just, you know, table it for the next meeting.
I'm fine with that, but I want to make a comment on the policy before we do that.
Oh, you have a question on the policy?
Yeah, but, but.
No, go ahead, Joel, I thought Joel had moved on, you go ahead.
For the, for the policy, the policy's linked to other policies, which led me down a policy rabbit hole, and the policy that was just reviewed on food service links to a school wellness policy, which is policy 650. And one of the things that's required, two things that's required are monitoring for at least every three years, and this is a surprise to Kevin, I apologize. The superintendent will provide implementation data and reports to the board containing, concerning this policy's implementation about kind of the wellness district, and I don't know if that's been in the last three years, and I'm not expecting an answer with a surprise, but if it hasn't been, I was wondering if we could just get it on the agenda sometime within this year, doesn't have to be at the next meeting or anytime soon. I know that before COVID, we had some community, community involvement in related to school wellness as part of that policy, and we had some start of a wellness committee that, of course, COVID's squashed with many other things, but just thought it might be a nice time
Sure.
as things slow down, I know we got a lot on our plate for the next few meetings that we could discuss that in a little bit more detail. My only request, going down the policy rabbit hole. And that's all the comment I had, Gary, sorry.
That's fine. I thought we were done, my apologies.
Okay, so let's just decide, I'm fine with the, having a brief discussion on what, on the topic you're bringing up, anybody else opposed, or? Okay.
Okay, so what the parent is asking for, he reached out to the IHSA, which governs the high school athletics, and they are, he did confirm that spectators are allowed up to 50, and, but the boards can set the policy, so like for the example tonight where the girls are playing bad So like for the example tonight where the girls are playing basketball tonight, that school's only allowing home fans in the building. And that's actually kind of my point, because for a lot of these athletes, it is their senior year. And parents want to see them play one more time. It might be the last time they ever play an organized sport as it is for many kids. And I think it'd be, it'd be a, a good thing to do on behalf of the board if we gave some instruction to Kevin to, you know, potentially allow the home fans to come in. I don't even know how many basketball games there's going to be at home this year. I, I know attendance usually isn't a problem in our building, shall we say, for these things? But I just think it would be a nice thing if the parents could get in and see their students play one more time. So that's just my opinion. Do you want to add?
Yeah, and I was going to mention that Saturday was our very first athletic event. And so part of it is just our athletic department working through like everything else, you know, the whole logistics, you know, bringing the teams in, officials and so forth. But the plan is to add spectators. So they, they, they are ramping up for that, so that will happen. I'll just, I'm going to give you my editorial comment here because you're right about the IHSA. Well, first of all, the IHSA has been changing their protocols almost daily, I think. So we're dealing with that. But the IHSA originally said 50 people in the gym. And then they realized that when you're talking basketball, you're talking 13 to 15 players per team, couple of coaches, couple of officials, scorer, timer, all these different people. Well, pretty soon you're up to, close to 50, you haven't even brought a fan in. So then they said it was 50 fans outside of the players, coaches and, you know, all those ancillary people. And, and here's my, what I struggle with. We're told that we can only have 50 people in the cafeteria for lunch, but we can have 50 fans plus these other individuals. So that's just an editorial comment.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's not going to change how we look at it, but the, the athletic department is looking at it and they will start to bring fans in.
Okay.
Kevin, I'm so glad you said that. My only comment was if we're, if we don't have our, you guys know me, if we don't have our kids in for a full day of school, then let's hold off on the sports for a second. So, thank you.
But the different thing, they're, they're not eating, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Just breathing heavily.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a balance.
And then, I don't know if you have more input about sports period as far as what's to happen, I guess, in the high school? And then, I don't know even if that will extend to the junior highs? There any other update?
High school, right now it's basketball. And then in March, football is green light, we have a green light to start. Just so that nobody's taken by surprise, we were having a conversation this morning, there's, there is a difference between playing football in March versus the fall. And one of those things is the field conditions and frozen fields and the potential for concussion. So we may have to get a test done on our field to see just how frozen it is, you know? There's also snow removal, you know? So there, there are challenges related to that. And then later on in the spring, baseball, softball and track. Junior high, the athletic conference for the junior high voted not to have indoor sports. They are considering the spring sports. So, and that is, they're, they're different governing bodies, you know, that, and so a decision will be made about that a little bit later in the school year.
And I guess my only comment is maybe just to add this to kind of the regular bi-weekly update, if there's an, if in that, our, our school update, right? As they are making decisions, Justin, IHSA has, you know, made this adjustment or whatever that may be, just so, because I don't think it needs to necessarily be a second discussion item. But I do think that it's important to get updates on the sports as they're updated in, in the meetings.
Kevin, you had sent out information on the, our board, our Friday board updates, though, on that, I thought.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, any other comments about that topic? Okay, we have a couple of action items. The first item attached are administrator contracts for approval. And so they are all in board docs. Does anyone have any questions or comments on those?
I wish we could give every single one of our administrators and teachers a $1 million raise this year. This is painful to.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the administrator contracts for the 2020-2021 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeier?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, and next up is approval of the superintendent's contract. I will say that the board met last, gosh, beginning of the school year and had Kevin's annual evaluation and were very pleased with his performance and, and all the, the work he's put into our district and where we have come under his leadership. And we are happy to extend Kevin's, roll over his contract. He completed all of the goals and requirements of his current contract. And so we're extending a multi-year contract for Kevin for two additional years. But this will also be a retirement contract for Kevin. And so it's bittersweet in that regard, I think. But maybe not so much for you, right?
After this meeting.
So this contract will go next school year and the following school year. And then the board will have a big job on its hands to fill Kevin's shoes down the road. So any questions or comments on that before we vote? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's contract as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeier?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Very good. Approval of board agreements. So this is, we made a few modifications to our board agreements after our last self-evaluation. And they are here for our approval. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the board agreements? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the board agreements as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeier?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
All right, in retirement of policies, the chair will entertain a motion to retire policies 538, 5121 and 5160 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Strohmeier?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Just one item in my report. Our high school is having their play, It's a Wonderful Life. It'll be this weekend, February 12th and 13th. They are streaming it live so you can view it. And it's $10 to receive a code so that you can view the play. So typically this would have happened in November, but because of everything else going on, but it's great that the students are getting the opportunity to perform.
That's wonderful.
Okay, are there any board reports? Any public comment? Okay. Future meetings and events, we have the Westmont Junior High School PTO meeting on February 10th at 7:00 PM. And then, as Kevin mentioned, the Westmont High School presents It's a Wonderful Life, which is on demand. And that's February 12th and 13th. And tickets available for $10. No school on President's Day, February 15th. And then incoming ninth grade night at, excuse me, that's, that's online, Kevin?
Yes.
And that will be February 18th at 6:30. And our next school board meeting is February 23rd here at the Village Hall. There'll be no, are there any additional communications that we need to talk about? No?
Kindergarten registration? Kindergarten registration? March 3rd, 4th, I think?
March 5th.
March 5th, yeah.
Just a reminder.
It was in my, my report last board meeting. I'll have it in the February 23rd.
Okay, and there'll be no closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.